Ladies and gentlemen, we've started recording. You didn't have to get quiet, I just didn't want you saying anything you didn't want on the record.
I guess the main question I had is, you're projecting revenue of $600,000 annually. Do you know what the revenue has been at that location?
I do not have the figure for, so we were in operation, owner purchased it in late January of '24. We operated until October 31st, but it was strictly an ice cream shop at that time. It was strictly selling ice cream out of two drive-through windows. I don't have the accurate figure, I believe it was somewhere close to half of that. I don't have it for an accurate figure.
So you're saying, I guess, that the sales would increase if we hit the transfer.
That is correct. For several reasons, we recently, or the client has reconstructed and remodeled the second portion of the building, let's say it's about 3,000 square feet, into a convenience store area. We've got all our racks, we've got our drinks, we're not operating right now, but we do have a convenience store area. So that number factors in, the increase to a convenience store and everything that comes along with that, via tobacco, chips, drinks, sodas, you name it. And then added liquor permit would benefit our business. Well, my estimation is about another $100,000 in revenue added to that. So the numbers that you see here are an estimated revenue projection of $600,000.
Now, is that 600 total, or is that an added 600 with the convenience store?
Total.
I believe you said it's probably have to.
And to be honest, my estimation of the $600,000, I thought was fairly conservative. I did not want to present new numbers that were astronomically higher to get everyone's hopes and excitement up. So I did think my numbers were reasonably conservative. I try to give kind of like a low basis of what I project.
So then off of that, am I to assume that when you say with wages totaling approximately 97.5 annually?
Just, well, for that, I supplemented an answer to that, and that number is actually closer to about $81,406 annually. And the numbers that I applied there is, we would have two full-time employees. And the numbers that I'm generating at is about minimum wage, 10.25, 10.3 is applied to this equation. Two full-time employees, we plan to bring three part-time employees, because now we turn into a convenience store, so we plan to be a 365-day model. So we anticipate five employees that way, two full, three part-time, about 25 hours per week, and a year-round. I know I calculated a 2.7% new employer tax rate, which resulted in about $2,107,000.
Okay, so the $81,406, I'm assuming that that's also total?
Yes.
Okay.
That's total for the five employees together.
Okay, and so that would be the ice cream shop and the convenience store?
Yes, we, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so here, my overall, is that when you look at the numbers, they have to make sense.
Of course.
Okay, so I'm gonna assume that the majority of what they sell in the ice cream portion, there is no tax on?
That is correct. The number that I'm applying for the sales tax portion, give or take, is about 60% of the items to be taxable, which is pretty standard for convenience stores.
And then you have said that about $300,000 is already sales, and they're gonna do 300 more?
Yes, my perception, yes.
Okay, so then when you estimate sales tax at 26.1, you're estimating about $375,000 in taxable sales?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
So how does that add up to you?
So when I take the $600,000 number, and I apply it towards a tax rate of 7.2, well, I took the $600,000 and I divided that by, well, I applied 60% in the 360,000 number that you mentioned, and I applied a 7.25% tax rate to get $26,100.
Right, but if you're already, if you're only gonna increase by $300,000, and the vast majority of your original $300,000 is not taxable, and then even of the $300,000 that you are gonna increase it to to get to 600, not all that's gonna be taxable either?
That's, that's correct, we're, I'm taking it in the full accounting of the convenience store and the ice cream shop together.
Correct, so again, you already have 300.
I see, I see.
How, how are you getting 375 as taxable, because that would be impossible to me?
I see what you mean. So my numbers actually aren't, that $600K, I should reiterate, in your state, does not include the original sales of the ice cream shop. It does not include, so we believe that convenience store and the liquor would give us $600,000 in additional revenue. So my focus on this was, because the total amount invested in this project, originally I did it with $300,000, and I believe that came back with a question of how much was used to rent it, or since a convenience store specifically. So every other number tracks as just a convenience store, not the ice cream shop. So my apologies on that. The $600,000 is strictly my estimation in revenue that the convenience store would generate, on top of the ice cream.
Okay, so then I'm gonna re-ask my other question. The eighty-some thousand, is that total, or is that convenience store?
This is going to be, well, convenience store only.
Okay, because that's opposite of what you just said?
It's convenience store only. So none of the numbers include the ice cream portion of it, that's correct?
Okay. My, my overall take on this is that if you look at the original application versus the second application, versus your email of February 3rd, versus your second email of February 3rd, and the third application?
Correct. So with the first application being, I used the $300,000 number, and I actually applied 100% sales tax. So that was an error on my part, calculation-wise.
Everything was totally wrong on that?
Right, it's, yes, that was specifically taken as 100% sales tax, which I tried, and I communicated with Matt that, hey, this is a supplemented version, my mistake on the first one, please disregard all of those numbers. These are the new updated numbers, and then I try to give kind of a five-point explanation on how I got to these numbers.
And so, you know, my overall take is that when you are gonna say that it's gonna increase by $81,000 in wages, what the city is looking at is about $1,600. And so, when you have, just saying it bluntly, when you have a place that's had five bites at the apple of giving you the numbers, and they're all different, I don't know it's worth the risk for $1,600 worth of income, because it could absolutely cost us more than that if things don't, don't go right.
And absolutely, and this is no fault of the applicant themselves whatsoever. It's my 100% mistake on the first one. First one, I went within different numbers, I thought it was gonna be the entire $300K investment, and I applied 100% sales tax. That was a mistake, and I tried to quickly correct that. And talking about a few bites at the apple with the application, we've also switched, initially we're going to do an ice cream alcohol fusion. That quickly did not work out, and we changed our idea on that, we thought it was a little bit too complicated. So then when I got a little bit more specifics on that we're looking at just the $50,000 number invested, these numbers are only for the convenience store. So I wish I could disregard that entire first application for you. That was 100% my mistake, and I really don't want the applicant to be harmed in any way. I will tell you, this was the first Trex application I've done myself, so please excuse any of my faults on that. I try to be very proactive in communication with Matt on updating these applications for you guys. So, that being said, I would like to explain that, yes, we believe the $600,000 in the revenue is coming strictly from the addition of the convenience store and the liquor permit included. We thought it wouldn't be worth it to even talk about the ice cream, as that was an existing business, and had nothing to do with the liquor permit strictly. Although these are, this is one building, two separate businesses, two separate shops going down there. So out of that $600,000 number, I do anticipate that we will have five employees working in the convenience store, two full-time, I mean, two full-time, three part-time, generating at about $81,406. Again, this number is also very conservative, I believe, because I'm applying the lowest wages, $10 per year, since the Ohio. Which brings us to about, yes, an employment tax about just over, about $2,200. Property taxes, the $50,000 addition, I calculate it's gonna add another $745 in property tax. Sales tax, $600K revenue, first time I didn't put my application in, I did make the mistake of counting 100% taxable items, for convenience stores more than 60. So out of that, $600,000, $360,000, as well, I calculate these sales eligible, which brings us to about annual sales tax, sales tax of $26,100, which will only increase as revenue is going, and then we're starting to give pay raises plus our employees, of course. And then on top of that, with the state withholding tax, it's about $2,849. So all in all, we're looking at a total of about $31,000 in sales, in total tax that the state hold in. I hope that clarified any of, any of the confusion there. Mr. Rattler, if that wasn't sufficient to you, I'd love to...
Well, so, you know, because again, I mean, I may be on this too much stickler on the numbers, but if you, let's just look at your $81,406. Okay, and you say that's two full-time and two part-time jobs?
Yes.
So two full-time jobs would bring us up, and that's if my quick math here by pen on my paper, would bring us up to $41,600?
For just the full-time.
For the two full-times.
Yeah.
And then the two part-times, that would leave us with $39,800.
It was three part-times, wasn't it?
Yeah, you said three. Oh, you said three?
That's correct.
Okay, that would make more sense then.
That's correct.
I, myself, I don't see a gigantic economic impact with this. As far as bringing in revenue, I used to get ice cream there all the time before. It was very good, and the people that owned it before were very nice. And, but, you know, I know that people want this permit, they want this. I know from experience growing up in that area, that that location is a good location for a business. And it's had a lot of good, successful businesses in there over the years. But I know there's some confusion about the numbers, and you've very nicely tried to explain and admitted some of your mistakes, and we appreciate that. And coming forth with that, and trying to clarify some things here tonight.
You know, the function of our committee is to determine what is the added benefit. Can you tell me, how many employees did they have before?
Absolutely, and I should have introduced, I have a manager at the table. He can honestly answer any daytime operation questions.
Okay.
In morning thing, there is only one entry to open, and after cleaning everything, like everyone was inside everything, after four o'clock, there is a three more, only per party. Then they are doing eight o'clock, there is a eight o'clock, one more guy coming there for the cleanup of them. So there is a four, for that time, and summertime is busy, so we can edit like, if summertime there is too busy, then we can hire somebody else. If summertime is going to be a seven, eight, a question, summertime, not the permit.
Everything you're explaining is for last year's ice cream shop, right?
Yes. So right now, what happened, if Friday, Saturday, Sunday is too busy, so that time we hire, so if we need somebody, so we can have that touch. So there is always open hiring, but summertime is not.
What we're looking, what we're looking for is the difference between before and after.
Yes.
And so if you, if you have the same number of employees after, it's not really adding to that.
Same number, like, always we need a two-hour. So right now, and it's not full-time, half-time. They are coming like morning, somebody's coming, four o'clock is on, after somebody's coming. But only Friday and Saturday, we need one or two more numbers. But right now, we project like to full-time, open to like full-time, and after three, four o'clock, you know about the area. It's busy.
And that's for the convenience store?
Convenience store, and also we need some more for ice cream shop.
How many employees do you think are at that sort of, we are...
I think so, it's more.
More than five?
More than five.
I try to be fairly conservative with my application.
Because you know the, you know that area, Friday, Saturday, we have five to seven car in the night, summertime, the ice cream. So it's very busy.
So you're gonna be open twenty-four, seven?
No, eleven o'clock, two. So right now, the ice cream store is open, eleven o'clock, two thirty. And the convenience store, we open, we thinking about that, we open at eight, and we close at ten.
So twelve hours a day?
Yes, twelve to forty hours.
Yeah.
After we get a good business, then we get some, we can change the schedule.
Do they have any other questions? There, they look right to you.
I mean, I, again, I just think the more, the more we hear, the more that we realize, I just don't think they have all their stuff together and ready, and the risk versus reward, when we're looking at is $1,600 income to the city, I just don't think that it's worth it.
Well, I think as a committee, we need to push this to council with either a yes, no, or no commitment. So I would entertain a motion to move it on the council.
If a named applicant just, applicant actually has also another location in Marion, another business, that has a pending liquor license, so they have history, at least six, seven months pending, no violations of any sort, no underage sales, no Sunday sales or anything like that. So the permit for the applicant holder has some, although if he has six months, he has some experience with it.
What would be the other location?
Dino's Drive-Thru.
Oh, Dino's? So with my neighborhood?
Eight, ten, Dino's Street, or seventy?
Eight, one, seven, eight.
So...
Dino's Drive-Thru, Bar and Pizza.
And how long have...
It's closing on May 24th.
May, four, how long have you been off?
Seven, seven months.
You own the bar too?
Yeah, bar, pizza, and drive-thru.
So, do we want to move this on to council?
I don't see necessarily a gigantic economic impact, but I vote to move it on to council.
I agree. There, you want a second?
I, no.
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Point of order, you're not sending anything to council, because there's another committee that has to hear this, so your motion will probably be to send it to Legislation Codes Committee.
Okay, Legislation Codes?
Thank you.
Next meeting, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, so let's send it to them.
All right, I second that.
Okay. Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crater?
Yes.
Mr. Atlin?
No.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yeah. Okay, number two item on our agenda here, and I've lost my place.
Can Do.
We have the ordinance re-declaring the city of Marion's support for Can Do, and I see Mr. Comstock, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that's Comstock, Marion couldn't do. Last time I was here, we went through the, Mr. Crater wasn't here, we did meet Mr. Crater last week, and he got in by the street. So I thought I'd just give you a real quick update on the things we're doing. My handout is something we're working on now, we have our five sites that are in authentication process. Those are two new industrial park ideas that the consultant recommended. So if we're gonna have some of the premier sites in Ohio, we want to make sure we have some of the premier industrial parks in Ohio. So that top one is the Dual Rail Park, Elkhorn Parkway. I know it's small, but you see the comments the consultant made, we call it the Dual Rail Park. Their recommendation is that one, we expand it. But we also call it the Marion, Ohio Industrial Park, because somebody out of state or out of nation looking at it, when they see Dual Rail Park, doesn't sort of bring the image of Marionists. And then the second one, I'm really excited about, that's almost a 500-acre park that includes the Delaware Airport. And so that's, these are just two marketing projects we're working on. And then kind of just updates on the authentication process, we're in the final stage on Robert's properties. The environmental engineering studies are nearing completion. We're in the process of cataloging those studies, so that we can include them in our package. So that's my update.
Now, are these two of the five, or are these in addition to the five?
All five sites are in that picture. The top one is Kellon Parkway, those are the two Robert sites. And then the bottom, where you can see the Gruber Farm, which is kind of down the south. The Smith Farm is on the right, and then the Mid-Ohio Site is that one kind of in the middle.
Do these have addresses yet?
Well, for example, the Gruber property, we use their house, the Smith Farm, I don't know if they actually have addresses assigned to them.
Did you have a question about other sites?
So, these are pretty much, like you said, there's a few environmental studies to go, and what we're waiting on is to get those done. Once they're approved, then this would be open if somebody wanted to come in and develop it.
Well, the next step is, we submit it to Jobs Ohio, and help early vet the projects and authenticate them. If you go to the Jobs Ohio website, you'll find a website on authenticated sites, and it lists a few around the state of Ohio that are fully authenticated. And then Jobs Ohio will start marketing the sites. So we have the five sites, the two Robert sites at the north, in the Kellon Parkway, the closest to being fully authenticated, thus having all the documentation we need. So we'd like to submit those as soon as possible, once we, I mean, those environmental studies are hundreds of pages. We need to make sure they're cataloged, so when we submit that information to Jobs Ohio, everything's clear from there, two in the final. And then the marketing thing is, when we market those sites, we'd like to be able to say, here's the industrial park that we have, the other businesses that are in that park, so that, it's like when you move in the neighborhood, if you have a, somebody that's in the neighborhood that you like, you might move there as well.
I've heard a rumor that one of the sites is a solar farm, gonna be a solar farm?
Well, that's, you're probably talking about the one to the east side of Poet, a thousand acres up there. You know, that Savion Shell is in the process of building a solar.
Okay, but that's not one of these sites, right?
It's not the two Robert sites on this map?
No. The solar farm would be to the north, the north side of that, kind of between Poet and F-521 is the, where it's there.
So there's no other claim on these properties, or anybody wanting to build, or prior agreements?
No, well, I mean, I, we're having a title search on the properties as part of the... Well, I mean, I, we're having a title search on the properties as part of this one.
Okay.
And until that title search is done, we don't really know for sure.
Well, we have an option agreement with the owner that says the property is free and cleared. So we're in the process of.
But no other claim is on this? Okay, so these five sites here, up in ninety-eight and?
Three oh nine.
And three oh nine, yeah. It's a nice area.
I assume that with approval of this, there comes a financial benefit. I think we have a donation or whatever.
Oh, yeah.
What, what would happen to Can Do if that was not approved?
Well, it's probably, let's see, we have about a hundred and eighty, hundred and ninety thousand dollar budget or something, so that's a big chunk.
A big chunk out.
So we get about forty thousand from the city. About forty thousand from the county. So it's about eighty thousand. We raise about a hundred thousand from the private sector. So we're a little less than half, or the majority of our money comes from the private sector.
Mr. Rattler, do you have anything?
I don't.
Mr. Brader? Anything?
Not at this moment.
Anyone in the audience have, Mr. Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I'd like to give Van benefit of the doubt. Maybe he doesn't know what I know, speaking to Mr. Comstock. There are two parcels, an industrial park that are owned by Wes Roberts. The back of the lease that I've given you that was signed three years ago, I believe it'd be March of two thousand twenty-one, three. The back of it is visual illustration, a map of Marion City. In small letters, you might have to get your glasses off, show you where each of the eight parcels that this lease covers. Two of those parcels are on the east side of Kellogg Parkway and a five Williamsport Road. This is forty-one, twenty-two, seventy, double zero, two zero zero. The other one is the same front numbers, except the last two being three hundred. That is both sides of the industrial park, which is all, and seven thirty acres to the sound, which is titled Basil in the town. The lease that I gave you, which I provided to Mr. Comstock, ties that land down for the next five years until twenty twenty-six by a company named Saturn, just the same, that put the solar panels north of Williamsport. So don't be confused, we're not, that lease does not cover the ground north of Williamsport Road. It covers a parcel next to Poet, next to Corey Park. So we will have the joy of going to now Corey Park and examining a sea of glass in the entry while we cook. Also, the two sites, or two of the five sites that the county commission and you have been sold on for now months or longer, that need to become job ready, two of those, according to that lease, are tied down in a solar panel farm for the next five years with a thirty-year extension available to them afterwards, and two five-year extensions after that. Now, I'm sorry, but there's a lot of opposition to solar farms. It's hard to put them in Pleasant, I've illustrated that locally. So there's no solar farm that has an approved agreement that's going to give it up for the dream of jobs from Intel that are going to set up in our Parkway. This land is spoken for. It's much like selling the Golden Gate Bridge. You can't develop it. It's solar farm ground now for the next forty-five years. My question is why, in knowing this, would any? I could understand, truthfully, I could understand, I was a councilman for ten years. Never do I believe there was one year I did not support or fund Can Do. Maybe that was just because I didn't know. Maybe it was run different back then. It just wasn't on my radar, didn't hear a lot of problems with it. But in knowing that the county commission was just asked for a hundred thousand dollars of a million dollar grant that they were given, or a funding source from the solar company, they were asked for a hundred thousand, it was stated to the county commissioners, this would be seed money to make these five development projects marketable freely to subsidiaries of Intel and Columbus. All right, that conversation happened a month and a half ago. You're now being asked for funding that will, and has gone, your past funding just went to environmental studies, phase one and phase two environmental studies, test boards, those are necessary as well. All of these things are done, with even industrial development in mind, solar farms have to do the same thing. They have to have the environmental studies done, they have to have the geotech studies done, they have to have the wetland mitigation studies done, all of that's required of them, too. I just wonder why our tax money would be inadvertently asked for to fund these things for a solar farm that won't create one damn job in the next forty-five years. And actually, let me illustrate how much money the county and the city. The city invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in Kellogg Parkway. It went to the state and asked for the same money. This was Jack Kellogg's dream, henceforth the namesake of the road. Jack had a vision that we were going to have industry, you know what? There was industry that came to the Kellogg Parkway. It just stalled, it stopped, got about halfway developed. To have the rest covered in solar panels was not Jack Kellogg's dream, it shouldn't be ours. Have you been to Byhelia? I challenge any of you, drive to Byhelia. The same people that put those solar farms in are putting the ones in for us, they don't know how to use a level. They can't even run a straight line. My God, they just follow the contour, the cheapest, most, they don't even make them in a straight line to make them look uniformly appeal. And they surround people's houses with them. Imagine if you had a piece of real estate over there. Hey, I'm all for alternative energy. I tend to think that maybe the new brains and nuclear coming out will be our answer. That's just my opinion. But I had a positive attitude towards solar until I drove to Byhelia and Ridgefield. And I looked around, and just acres upon acres upon acres are covered in aluminum and glass. And it doesn't lower anyone, they don't even get the benefit. It's kind of like the folks at Niagara Falls. They get to look at the falls, but the power generated goes to New York City. And they get to run off coal. And they're scratching their head, wondering why is New York City's bills lower than ours? Well, thank you for your free energy, we appreciate taking it from you. That's why rural people in New York hate New York City. It just gets sad. We don't want our tax money subsidizing the primary investment costs of a solar farm. And you should be infuriated. Mr. Comstock, if you knew this, they should be infuriated with you. I will give you the benefit of the doubt. Maybe you didn't know this, maybe he wasn't told by Kishin Development, which is Keith and, and Sheila, it's Wes Roberts. Maybe they didn't, maybe they couldn't remember that they signed the lease four years ago that tied the ground down for forty-five years. Maybe they just got Can Do suckered into pan for their developers' environmental surveys. Now you know.
So these other properties here are also?
Two, I'm sorry.
The ones around the airport.
Yeah, around the airport.
No, I didn't see evidence of any of those covered in the lease.
Okay.
However, Roberts one and Roberts two are both covered in the lease.
All right.
So the bottom note, I didn't see that, however, I don't know what other leases, I didn't look that property up on, or what other leases.
Thank you.
Cover. Any of you can look that up as public record, it is at the recorder's office, as recorded again. I'll just read this, and then I'll sit down. So if there's no misunderstanding. The lease shall initially be for a term of five years, commencing on the effective date, and the effective date here is March twelfth, twenty twenty-one, as far as it's reported. They've actually got March tenth. So it'll go five years, probably March tenth when it was signed, that was in twenty-one, it'll go March tenth to twenty-six. Leasee shall have the right and option to extend the term of the lease for one additional period of thirty years. Upon the term set forth in the lease, additionally, leasee shall have the right to renew the extended term for two additional five-year periods. And no, I do not see anywhere in the record where there was a release of this lease, as if it had been satisfied and they had withdrawn. It is still actively attached to that property. And not one company can build on that as long as that lease and the solar company has that lease.
So let me, let me get this clear. So after March of twenty twenty-six, if those solar companies don't build, and it's not renewed, whatever they wanted that land, then it would be open?
If they did not renew it?
They did not renew it. So after March of twenty twenty-six, it could then be, once again, if the solar company don't move in, we could actually put something that would bring jobs to Marion in those locations?
If you're, that is accurate?
Yeah.
If you're assuming that a solar company, keep in mind the restrictions placed on solar panels and their adoption. The time period for denying those has gone. Many, many townships denied the ability for anyone to put solar panels on their ground. That period's now gone. So there's not a whole lot of ground out there. It seems as if the townships that did nothing, such as Byhelia or Marion Township, got all the solar panels. The ones that stepped up, for instance, Pleasant and other townships, Clayborne, et cetera, they said, we don't want solar panels, so we're going to opt out of the solar panel program. That was years ago. Land is scarce. I don't think that any of us could assume a solar company is gonna not exercise its rights on that property that it has now paid for from the landowner. I think they're going to exercise their rights as soon as the first solar farms built, they're going to be on the south side of the road. That's the inevitability. But either way, you don't want your ground going towards funding this property, because it's not marketable, it's a blighted title right now. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels, appreciate the information.
By the way, I have been down to Byhelia, it's an ice shore, and it goes on for miles.
It's terrible.
Okay, what's the pleasure of committee?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I've, again, I've been up here for twenty years, and I think there was only one, one time since I've been here, I did not vote to fund Can Do. And that's because at that point, I felt that Can Do did not work anymore. And that was about ten years ago. And then, you know, Gus came in, and I felt that there was a revitalization and a renewal of Can Do. There was some new energy there. And honestly, I don't know as far as a new business that came in. Now, there has been some that have expanded here, but I don't know how many wins that we can say that Can Do's brought. And I know what, we, two weeks ago, we heard from Evelyn Waromna say that we were eligible for some more grants because we had hit the fifty-five percent poverty threshold. We can't sit up here and say what we're doing is working. And, you know, continuing to throw money at an organization that has brought us a fifty-five percent poverty threshold is foolish. You know, and I'm not saying that I have the answers for it, but I think by process of elimination, we can cross this one off, because it just doesn't work anymore.
Well, we have the responsibility to move it to council, either with a yes, no, a yes recommendation, no vote.
I don't think, I think we can, we have the responsibility to send it on to council or not. If we are wanting it to send on to council, then we have that, and if we don't, then we, we don't have.
We don't have the option, according to the rules. We don't have the option. We have, we have to move it to council. And we can give it three recommendations, yes, no, or no recommendation at all.
You say that we have to move it to council?
Yes. I can show you in the rules, we do.
That doesn't, you're on. I, um, maybe you change the rules?
They, no.
I have a question for the law director.
Right, that's not, well, it's, it's in the council rules.
That just started today, then?
Nope, it's been there for quite a while. I can find the rules. Here we go. Committee meetings. No, no legislation shall be amended following committee. It shall be the duty of the committee to recommend to council the approval, disapproval, or amendment of any rec, legislation pending for the committee. So we would have to send it on with a recommendation.
That's not what I got out of that?
I would just think it's a matter of precedence, what if one member approved to send it forward, another approved no action, the third member approved to not? Now you've got a three-way recommendation.
So it would be a no recommendation, basically. If you can't come to an agreement.
Jason Schaub, third ward, city council. Um, so there are options. One option, you can, could send it on to council and change the order to zero, instead of the dollar amount, and still say we support Can Do, that's a possibility. Or you could just table it and have them do something else.
Thank you. Well, since we cannot amend anything, we would have to send it to council.
It doesn't even make sense that you can't amend anything in committee.
That's what it says in the rules, though, until we change the rules.
Again, that's not what I get out of that.
Well, as chairman of the committee, that's what I get.
Any help from the law director?
Yep.
Jason Schaub, third ward, city council. I'm no law director.
Yes, sir.
But I've been here a while.
Me either.
And, and, and I think I got a small grasp on law and rules. And just basic business meeting operations, committee level is to provide something and send it on to council. The word amend means you don't have to take an official vote to change the legislation or whatever is in front of you. You have an open dialogue, and you change it, and then send those changes on to council.
That's amending. That would be amending. From the verbiage that comes to us, that's amending.
So we can play semantics maybe all night long, but you, within yourself, you have to understand what the function of committees are. And when you realize that, then you'll see that what you're asking isn't possible. It's not, it's not what it's been.
I disagree, Mr. Schaub, because the function of a committee is to take a proposal, propose legislation, make sure that it's refined, we get all the rubber job.
Means is another synonym of.
Right, to get the right information, make sure everything's.
That's refined is amending, right?
No.
Well, how do you refine it?
Well, how you refine it?
If you're not allowed to change it.
You can't change anything.
No, you can't change it, but you can, you can send it to council with a recommendation of yes, no, or no recommendation.
But your word refine, what is that?
Maybe I misspoke there, as refined, but it's to make sure that it's a proper, in the proper format, and it's the responsibility of all of council to vote it yes, no, or, well, yes, no.
The format thing is nowhere to be found in council rules.
Rule fifteen.
The margins do not have to be set for anything to be considered in, in committee. That was started as a favor to our clerk, when workload was very heavy, to get everything as near perfect going into committee to streamline things moving on. But if you change the formatting, isn't that amending it?
No, we put it into the correct format, which the clerk does. This, this ordinance.
Format anything.
This ordinance comes to us in a format. This ordinance comes to us in a format. We discuss it, we find out the, just like we did tonight with, with Joshy, if, if the numbers correct, everything, and once we receive, get all that information, then we send it to council with that information.
So your thought is, committee gathers information, and by a simple motion to send on with approval or no recommendation, council somehow between leaving committee and getting on council floor, knows what to do with the information we gathered?
With the information we send, yes. And that's the rules. That's not me.
Where does the information get attached to the ordinance or resolution if it's just a simple motion to send on to council?
Through our minutes. Clerk makes up the minutes of the, of the meeting.
So, so you're saying the clerk has to re-listen to the minutes, and whatever discussion went on, change the ordinance and put it before full council?
Well, once the, once the ordinance comes to full council, it can't change unless it's amended. If the full council has that authority, we do not, as a committee.
So I'm trying to, I'll just, no, it's been helpful to listen to you. I wouldn't lie to you. So I would need some time to place certainty on this response. But one thing is clear, an ordinance that has made its way before council and gets referred back to committee, I know the rule you referenced, it cannot be amended within the committee. It could be further discussion, but that, that rule that you referenced was an ordinance that's made it to council and sent back by council to a committee, can't be amended. I know that to apply in that case. But has this ordinance to support Can Do, the draft that's before you made it in this round to council?
No, it's been in committee.
Okay, it's been in committee. So your choice would be leaving it in committee, I can research and have an answer for you to next committee, 100% saying since it hasn't been to, hasn't been to council, it hasn't been referred back, that rule would not apply. Or, um, in my opinion, given my observations, this committee can choose, it doesn't have to act. It doesn't have to act. Council can, if it doesn't get two votes to approve and send on, it's not going to send it out of committee. So, you know, since it hasn't been to council, I think this committee has the ability to make a motion to amend what's before you now, change it in any form, if, if that's what it takes to get two votes to send it out of committee and send it on. So hopefully that didn't add additional confusion to it.
Okay. Now, my, my recommendation was going to be the, for us to hold on to it until we can get some clarification on that lease.
I think that's a great idea.
Mr. Comstock said that, that they were in the process of that now, so that's my recommendation.
That, that is my recommendation, is keep it here.
Yeah, that's good to be, I just, one thought on what you just said. If city council sends something back to a committee, it's typically because it needs to be changed.
I agree.
So committee has to have the ability to change it to send it back to council. It just, it, it doesn't, I, it just doesn't even make sense.
Well, Mr. Adif, I'm sorry if you weren't finished talking.
Sorry.
I agree with you. Mr. Shaw pointed this out, many years ago, this particular rule is hard to apply in the way we operate today. It meant something in 1969 when the council decided it was good at that point in time, but it's hard to interpret what their intention was at this time. So it's probably one of the best rules we could look at when we turn to council rules and, and make some revisions, because it is confusing to try to understand what they meant by that rule.
Well, and, yeah, there's several of them, and I, I did approach before council, uh, the legislation committee a couple of weeks ago, and requested a review of these.
At least that one?
Yeah, but all, all of them, actually, we looked at and make sure that they're up to date before we codify any ordinance and stuff. So we have a unanimous agreement to?
Well, we just don't have a motion to do anything, and it just stays here.
Okay. So moving on to the next. New business. Clerk, would you read the ordinance?
Ordinance to establish a.
Promatic agreement.
I'm glad you could pronounce the word right. Promatic agreement for HUD-funded projects between the Ohio Historic Preservation Office and the City of Marion and declaring an emergency.
As you know, the city of Marion has various grants and agreements with the Department of Environment for their HUD programs. Some of them are, like, revolving loan program. We then sometimes have to have an agreement to say, we'll only use those funds a certain way. And those agreements are, you know, five, 10 years long. This particular one is one that, some of the strings attached to the grants are environmental review process with federal funding. We go through what they call a Section 106 review through our Ohio Historic Preservation Office. So, uh, five years on our last agreement, it has been, is up. Uh, and they just finally kind of reworded the, uh, updated. It's really not any different than, than the past, but the newly five-year rule agreement between the city and OHPo is what we have here. This will take us through 2029. We really don't have the option so much to not accept it. One of the things it does do, one of the things, um, for every project we get and we use federal funds, even state funds in many cases, we have to coordinate with OHPo on. And their, this rule or this agreement says, well, if it's not a building, um, older than 45 years old, or it doesn't disturb ground surface, you know, then maybe you can't really afford it with them. But frankly, I always do coordinate with them, just to be on the safe side, because it's part of our ability to get access to our funds is to show whether we've gone through this and gone and released funds from the state or an environmental review, um, because most of the time it does disturb the ground, we're doing sidewalks, et cetera. So there are provisions in there that if for some reason we missed something, we can look back and say, was that something that was automatically exempted from needing to coordinate with them? So rare occasion, we don't coordinate, we then look and see, was that one? It was, it is basically a set of, uh, circumstances for when you go for a review from them when you're exempt, that even when you're exempt, they may get, earn a manual report to say what you did, that you didn't tell them. I'm a little, you know, do me that, but I'm trying to say, I didn't do anything without telling them, because I didn't want to risk the fact that from Ohio, they'll say, oh, no, further inspection, you should have come to us first, because we're not just applying for recovery funds, so. I usually just say, you signed the agreement, we'll try to, you know, we will coordinate with them on all cases, just to make sure. Quickly respond and say, we don't care about that one, then that's all the, turn it on. This is just an agreement, you kind of have to, if you want to have that good agreement, it will then go for the next five years, five years from now, come back with it.
Motion to send on to council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Recommendation to approve.
Yes, I'd vote for that.
Oh, Tason?
Do we need to change the dates? As far as the 25/4, we need to update that.
Uh, no, actually, they said, uh, in fact, they, the state didn't even get it to us until after that. They said they had granted us an extension, uh, the whole state, well, those agencies that are in this position, they've granted us an extension. This is actually definitely the dates that they wanted on, and we just have to get it to them by March 1st, and then we'll all be back into the new system.
And it, although we have the extension, it did expire December 31st. So that would be, that, that would be correct.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to send on to council with a recommendation to approve.
Yes.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Arsman?
Yes.
Mr. Freiter?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp.
Yes.
Okay, matters not on the agenda?
If I may, Mr. Shaw, from City Council. Back on the Can Do ordinance, it has a declaration of emergency on it, a declaration of emergency clause. You might want to figure that out over the next meeting.
Mr. Rollins?
Hey, Rollins, talk's about large. Just, I guess, got a question. Who is investigating this whole lease idea here?
Um, well, Mr. Comstock has left, but he said that they had some things going on with it, they were doing a title search.
Okay.
So I don't know.
I think it's up to all three of us to do that.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Yeah, so just, just to provide some, I guess, history, uh, being, I, in my day job, I'm the plant manager of Coet, which will be the neighbor here. Uh, so just to kind of, first of all, I don't like calling it a, a solar company, it's actually an oil company now. Uh, so in the process of the project being announced here in Marion, Savion actually was sold to Shell.
To Shell.
Uh, so all those original leases and lease agreements for that land were basically terminated because Shell does not work under lease agreements. So that land that the solar farm is actually being built on was purchased by Shell. So I don't know that any of these original leases are still active. If Shell would honor any of those, I don't know. Um, and I don't know if we'll get any honest answers, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll get ahold of Mr. Comstock and, and have him research that.
Thank you.
Any other matters? Not important. Okay, any other matters? None? Meeting adjourned.
Whoa.
Oh, sorry.
My name is Randy Conley. I reside at 523 Marion Street here in town. A young man, chief, I was in the hospital and got a second ticket on, pick up that I had licensed and full coverage insurance since day one. I bought it. I haven't put 50 miles on it, sitting in front of my house. Got the second ticket this past week. My next door neighbor got it off a D-bet, or the first one I didn't even see, but I went out and paid 25 bucks to stay out of trouble. This one, when she finds it, she'll give me a copy of, but would you do me a favor, if it's not asking too much, could you find out, law officer, put that in, and just have them look? I, I, I got, uh, I got the date tags on it, and if they need proof of their insurance, I have no problem. I, I got myself out of the hospital. Again, I think last time we had a bump, I had stolen IVMR to make sure I did not miss this council meeting. You have an officer named Mr. Raptor, you familiar with him?
I have.
Absolutely fantastic, absolutely. If you had a hundred of them, you'd be blessed. I had a young man that owned my yard, uh, you see, I'm handicapped and it's getting worse, uh, come in, I gave him water, uh, fixed him, actually fixed him a sandwich. And this ad came, and that time, they took my debit card laying on my coffee table. The dad went to McDonald's, ate on it, went to someplace else, and everything is funny, but I, I can't remember, so everything is, my brother, I had to get my brother died as my, and which has been changed, it don't matter if it's on camera, but anyways, they ended up taking over 1,200 bucks. We got hold, I had to get all approved, got hold of the police department here, nothing has been done, nothing. He tried, my boss, a raptor, his hands are tied, great guy, would go and try and talk to people, would try to get the, the police department to back him up on this. I see the guy, one day, I'm sitting on my horse with my dog, guy walks by, he says, "It don't do no good, call cops. If so, your house will burn." Well, unfortunately, this hillbilly couldn't get to my little friend by my front door in time, but I need that, I, uh, to leave 1,570 bucks when you're on social security and you are, you know, living, and I mean, week by week, some weeks I have to ask my son to buy my dog food, it's that bad. You used to have a cock pit, not anymore. I would like that, somebody to follow up with that, not only to make that young man return my money, matter if he garnishes it and have it paid to the court, I have no problem with it. The third matter is my apartment complex, you recall that? You recall the apartment complex I had bought on Charity Street? I have 43 police calls, 43. I have copies of every one when I went in, that, that's my, that pertains you guys, but that, we got to be friends there for a while. My bank got stolen, you recall that?
I don't recall each of the 43 reports.
Okay, I, I go to tape, I can play it for you, I spoke to you, came over there. We sat in your truck, matter of fact, to discuss, I sat in the foreboard here by the front seat, he was in your front seat, told you the bank number, told you who stole it, who they traded it for, who the hell, that cell phone is, meth, meth, whatever this drug, it's taken over the world, took who? This guy stole his dad, it's illegal, who's that he bought, stole my dad's pistol, let it pass away, gave it back, but it's this one I had bought. They traded it for $40 worth of meth, $30 cash, ended up having to come back for more $30. I've, I've had, I've had people telling, people, you know, me taking, oh, man, that's what was going on. I reported that. Nothing was ever done. But now I seen and I had to drive through, my, where this restaurant was, there's Dino's right through that street, there's another little drive through there, I seen it, I pulled in their white pickup. By this time, I'm still a hillbilly, I go in, or I get out, he comes out, and I ask my friend, where's my dad's pistol? Yeah, give me my dad's pistol, let, let's just close this, but I want my father's pistol that I bought. Ha, 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 what do you do? Don't whip his butt, I look up, there's cameras, I don't want to go to jail. But this other one, talking about that apartment complex, I lost over $275,000, is what that unit is worth. I had bought a bunch of building material, bought it off the guy that was sealed up. I bought building material, had the guys carry it clear up top, I was sure that said, give me a place to live, you know? I had building material put up on top. The squatters came in, took the building material, was standing downstairs, because we put it up one day, and, you know, it was late, so, you know, I let the boys know, and I come back the next morning, my door's locked. What the heck's on, you know, hey, I'm gonna bring this leg here, we don't know what to do with, excuse me, I just got out of the hospital, as you can tell. All of a sudden, I start pounding the door down, two squatters come out, and Gwen, somebody that's in wheelchair, got a leg, and another guy, says they, they lived there. No, they don't. I've had that property for two weeks, already got the, everything in my name, nobody lived there. Called the police department, we have a lady cop, and I, I don't know if it's 72 or maybe 74 or another. She came, spoke to them, and over told me, said, "You got evicted." They live here. No, they don't live here, this was gone, sealed up, everything turned off, no power, no nothing. The lady knew this guy's family. I go up to my car, guess what I get? I get a ticket for not having acqui, or acqui, uh, bathroom for these people and not having water on a unit that was sealed up by this lady cop. The same lady cop, my wife and I got COVID. I, or she's upstairs, I'm downstairs. All of a sudden, somebody beat, I mean, you know, I mean, not, not beat on my front door. I grabbed my pistol, my dog, we walked to the front door, I'm on oxygen, you know, I got just pair of oxygen, go to the front door, this same lady cop and this other guy that, that got the question, is standing at my front door, wanting me to come outside to arrest me for something I didn't know what the heck was going on, when they said that I didn't provide a bathroom a second time for a squatter. The squattering question is, my neighbor, the neighbors over there, I paid them to watch the place, and I had cameras set up watching this place. A guy had came over and broke the door down and went upstairs to his apartment complex, ran a string up so he could have his little security alarm, pull up, uh, Pepsi bottle with some rocks in it, and back the noise maker. I called the police, we had five police officers out there, asked if they were building this building, and they, you know, my neighbor seen them go- Asked them if they were building this building. They, you know, my neighbors seen them go up. They're watching. No one's came out. Well, we don't see anybody. Shine their flashlight. So I walk from the side. Sure enough, I see the hand move the curtain. Tell them, I says, "People, there is somebody up there. Get up there and get them out." They do not have proof. You can see where they beat the door. This lady, same lady cop, and this other, that's might be a lieutenant or somebody, the one that called me an app, called me a name that I got on my, on my camera for calling. Would not go up. I took my pistol, my flashlight. I headed up into property. Sure enough, I found a young man, and I let him know real quick, he was not welcome. He needed to come down. The police are downstairs to remove him. I get, or someone hollers up that if I touch him, they will arrest me for assault. I come downstairs, take the cops, said, "That's all recorded." I swear on my life, I've got five recordings of it, everything, everything I says is God's truth, but my grandson said. This guy comes downstairs, this lady cop, asking, "What's you doing after all? I live here." "Oh, yeah, I said, "Where's the mail? Where's anything special?" And I'm like, "Well, actually, my girlfriend kind of lived here, and I've been in jail." The cop says, "Well, what did you get out of?" "Oh, I got out about a month and a half of them." "So you don't live here." The cop, same cop, ordered me to leave my own property, or she was going to take me for jail for threatening the guy that I go blow his butt away, breaking into my property. I had her and four other cops, had five cops seen on camera, did not do jack nothing. Let this guy go back upstairs and order me off my damn property. That's wrong, Chief. You done about it. I talked to you about, I'm not saying here to blow you away, but I blow you away. There is, as God's my witness, they will be sued against four officers that will be very much reprimanded or possibly terminated. They will be two, if God's on my side, will be gone with nothing, no pension, no nothing for the wrongness that they caused. But also, you are their boss. The shit stopped at you. You've known about it. I talked to you directly about it, and now I'm getting ready to die and don't have a damn thing to leave my kids or my grandchildren. But you know what? Your pension is going to give my grandkids something. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I got everything I said is God's truth, the absolute God's truth. You done about it. The other little guy, uh, kind of, the skinny guy, he's not here behind you, city council. He went over to the restaurant and sat there, brought his laptop, and is playing these, and his mouth is dropping. How could somebody be treated like that? But I'll tell you how it happened. Got thirty seconds for him. Our buddy, the old mayor, I worked with him with several school projects. You know who he is. When I went up to him to ask his advice on how to do this, he said he was going to call you up and, "Don't call him. I want to give you a mortgage or a certain mortgage stake." What he do, he calls you and pissed you off. Too bad you're pissed off. How do you think I feel? Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you. Any other matters to come before the committee? If not, call a meeting of three and seven thirty-nine. Drop something.
Heard it.
Same, same story.
I don't know why you, you know, you can agree with the round.
You want to be around today?
I meant to put that underneath. I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. Was that the secret? Got a little buffer.
You might need it. I've been out working with pigs.
I'm going to say something, but I don't want you to accuse me of smelling you.
Are you delighting me?
You guys ready?
Yeah, I'm gonna make this go fast.
Okay.
I ain't gonna mess around, Ross.
Uh, seven forty-one, we call legislation codes and regulations committee to order. Clerk, could you please take roll?
Mr. Neff?
Here.
Mr. T. Smith?
Mr. Schaber?
Yep.
We have a summary of proceedings from January twenty-first.
Will be accept as submitted.
I will second that motion. Clerk, could you please take roll?
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaber?
Yes.
Uh, item number one of old business is a resolution for the Trex transfer that was brought to us from the last committee.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um.
Mr. Schaber.
This is our third Trex that has came before myself on council. Um, I did not vote for the first two, and I do not intend to vote for this one or even make a motion or a second to sec, to send this on the council. So in effort, or being mindful of everyone's time, I just wanted to let you know that if you're going to wait on a motion or a second, it will not come from me.
Okay. I don't think I really have any questions for, um, the applicant. Does anybody else have anything further on this matter?
May I ask a question?
Yeah, come up here and.
I apologize. I wasn't sure if the gentleman in the orange. Any questions or anything you would like here explained?
I, I think you pretty much answered everything the last time, but, uh, Mr. Schaber said he doesn't want to move forward this season. We have one, um, member of the committee that's absent this evening, and we didn't, really didn't get the paperwork that you had before. But you're saying the economic development, um, I thought, I thought I wrote it down, sixteen hundred dollars in city income tax.
But the gentleman that left in the scooter had a pop of nitro as he was going out the door. Yeah, he went out the door. I asked him if it's okay.
That's a first. He, he was pretty worked up.
Yeah.
And that, that is unfortunate.
Oh, please, I'm going to be okay.
Uh, it, Chairman, if, I'll explain my position, and it's not anything to do with, with you, your business coming into town. Um, my position is, we have a limited number of liquor permits for a reason, and I don't necessarily agree with going outside of our city, buying a liquor permit just to conduct business. So that's why I haven't voted for them, and I will not vote for them, simply because we have a limited number for a reason.
Can I ask if that's regardless of any projection revenue, any numbers? Is that a blanket?
For me, yes. For me, yes, yes. I, I just, it, it just doesn't set right with me. That could be the wrong way to think about this, but we set these limits for a reason. And to me, it kind of goes around, not due process, but if we put it on a ballot and let people vote, sure, by all means. To let the people have their say. And I think they did have their say when they limited the amount of permits that we can have in a certain area. We're at that maximum. So the people, in my opinion, have spoke. They don't want any more.
I'd like to say that, uh, I mean, the entire purpose of the Department of Commerce to introduce any economic development transfer forms, Trex, are for that reason alone. I mean, I, I know the state has set a specific number, um, but the reason why we have Trex is so we can add those for, back, you know, on case-by-case basis. Um, so that is the reason of Department of Commerce and Division of Liquor Control created such a.
Yes. And, and I understand Trex, we've been down this path before. Few of them a little more smoother than this one, um, but I'm not holding that against the applicant. It's just my position on the Trex. And, and, and I stated that I will not make a motion or second a motion, just because that gives you guys the opportunity for another committee member to be here at the next meeting, and then there'll be numbers possibly to move it forward. So it's not dead. It's just dead tonight with me.
Okay.
So, Mr. Schaber, I, you know, maybe you can remember better than me, but we've approved Trexes in the past. I mean.
Yes.
We have had some Trexes.
As a whole has passed them, but I have not supported them.
Understand.
That was just my position.
Understand.
Do we have any indication on when the last Trex transfer was approved in Marion?
I don't.
It was the one on Fairground and Main Street. That was last summer. No one's here that's, was here. Mark, do you remember? It was last summer.
I think you're right.
Yeah, and the one prior to that, I don't think it went through. It was the, it was a permit leaving the city. I think they pulled that one back, if I remember right, because it was going from a drive-through or something, I can't remember, outside. But yes, we've been through this before. And we've had, passed them.
I think the last Trex was the summer of twenty-three.
Time flies.
It was before I was on council, so.
That it does.
Yes.
So it looks like what the committee is going to do at this point is take no action. Um, and then when would our next committee night be?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
As much as I hate to do this, because we've had this on our agenda for, I don't even want to say how many times. But we will move that back into old business for, say, February seventeen?
Yes, sir.
February eighteen.
We'll put a order, please. Our next committee meeting is November seventeenth.
The eighteenth.
Eighteen.
President's Day, six thirty starts, I'm presuming.
Yes, sir.
Would the committee like me to recently submit a new application?
I, I just never had a chance to review all of this information. I know there's been two or three applications, but I, in my opinion, let's go with what we have now. Do you have any opinion, Mr. Schaber?
That's fine.
I think we should stay with what we have.
I was going to say, Mike, do you have any questions?
Okay, I just got to take some time to review it. I know you, you're basically talking like three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and you're projecting, is that the additional revenue?
Additional revenue will be six hundred thousand with a sixty percent of that being estimated.
Oh, yeah, so three sixty. Taxable.
Uh, which, yeah, twenty-six thousand a hundred for the sales tax per year, and conservative number, the larger we grow, if we are awarded the Trex permit, I mean, that number's only going to grow up, right, as long as our record grows.
Yeah, but that, that was the scope of the previous committee. I view our scope as the liquor permit itself.
Um, so if I may ask, uh, so seventeenth?
The eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, yes.
No new application? Will I be, I'll be in touch with Matthew, of course, if.
No.
I think we have all the information. We just need to go over it and meet back at that time.
Sir, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anything else on this matter? Um, oh, once again, old business, item number two, we have a couple of, um, liquor permits. And I did receive an email, uh, on January twenty-second, so I thank the, um, Chief McDonald for working on this and his team. Um, now, I'm probably going to try and get this right, and I could be wrong, but the first application we had is the Family Dollar on Barks Road. And this is a new permit. So the Family Dollar on Barks, Barks Road, from the information that I got, right, at this point, they already have a C-one permit, which was, went through in February of twenty-four, and this is a new permit for a C-two permit, which is the wine and prepackaged low-proof mixed drinks. So that's what this new application is. Does that sound right?
Yes. Do you want to do these one at a time, Barks, and not burn, or do you want to?
I think if we just do them one at a time, because they're different, they're doing different things, they're asking for different things. Okay, is there any input from police or fire on this?
No, no reason to yet.
Okay, do you think that I got that right, at least what I said? Okay, so we're taking no action on the Family Dollar on Barks Road. So then we've got another new application. This is for Family Dollar at ten eighty-eight Mount Vernon Avenue. Right now, they have a C-two permit, and this application is for a C-one permit, which is for beer carryout sales.
I will, is, so do you want to vote for Barks Road and then vote for Mount Vernon?
Yeah, let's do Barks first.
Okay, I will restate my motion to take no action.
Clerk, could you please take roll?
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaber?
Yes, and I will make a motion to make, take no action on the Family Dollar, Mount Vernon Avenue.
I will second that, and clerk, could you please take roll?
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaber?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to item number three, which is new business. We have a liquor license transfer for TJ's Tobacco. Uh, as far as I can tell, this is switching from one owner to a new owner. Do we have any input from police or fire on this?
Yeah, we have no reason to object.
With that said, uh, Chairman Neff, I will make the motion to take no action.
I will second that motion. Clerk, could you please take roll?
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Schaber?
Yes.
Matter's not on the agenda tonight.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, um, have a rule change or clarification. I had been working on it a while back ago, and then when Mr. Smith came up and invited us to revisit it, I figure I should bring it forward. It's been through Mark, I believe. Um, I have yet to put it in the proper format and get it to, um, Mr. Pollak, but I would like to discuss that next week, and it's dealing with the, uh, rule forty-four, rules to suspend, and it clarifies if it's, um, can be reconsidered or not, and it also states that at least one member of the minority party must vote. And I will have that before committee on the eighteenth, if you will allow.
Yes.
And there may be a few others. I don't know yet. Just depends on how eager I want to be.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, any other matters not on the agenda tonight? If not, we are just, we are adjourned, seven fifty-three.
Adjourned, dismissed, whatever, we're done.
Right.
What's next?
Zoning.
Means I can stay?
Yeah.
You gotta stay.
I know, and it got, it got bastardized a long time ago.
Ron, you coming on?
Yeah, I'm coming. Yeah, I'm coming.
And I have it by, um, Ward as well. These packets are stapled just because, they break each ward down into a full page, so you can look at more detail for the purpose of seeing the whole city you do have there. Requested at the last committee when we started talking about these things.
You ready to call to order, Ron?
Yes. This meeting of the, uh, Marion zoning and annex. This meeting of the zoning and annexation committee is now beginning at 7:55. Have our call to order.
Mr. Prater?
Here.
Mr. Rollins?
Present.
Mr. Schaubert?
Here.
All right, next on the agenda is our summary of proceedings, has everybody here read through it and understand it?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, second, old business, there's none?
Vote.
Oh.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
All right, old business is none, and on new business, we have four different items here about zoning, and it's generally related to the sale of cannabis and drug, Evelyn, would you like to come forward?
Sure, these are, I suppose, text amendments coming out of City Planning Commission. So as you started to mention, each different topic, we've kinda made a resolution or exclusion ordinance by subject matter, so you can, you know, keep them all straight. Even if it's just one topic, it sometimes touches multiple parts of the zoning code.
Yeah, so can we start there, Chairman, can we just break these, can we go in order? So we're not talking about all these in totality, because I would like to break those down individually. Is that okay with you? Sir?
Yes, it's fine with me. Yeah, it's fine with me.
The first one was regarding recreational marijuana, marijuana sales. So at the last committee, we discussed the fact that City Planning kind of approached it, this was a moderate point of view, given the places of less strict, moderate, or more strict. So what you see here is where adult use cannabis dispensary, land recreational marijuana sales would be listed as principal permitted uses in the C1 shopping district, or excuse me, C2, which is community shopping district. So what you see first is how C2 is written now, and then what it gives you amended to, you see it basically left item in the tower, it gets listed as adult cannabis after you operate from marijuana sales. And what being in the C, if we first listed in the C2, and then pyramids up into C3, 4, and 5. For those who don't know, the City of Marion has five commercial districts. C1 is very neighborhood based, it breaks down into 1 and then B, but we'll just say C1. Then start C2, which is community. C3 is the immediate downtown core, C4 is the downtown frame, which is kind of around the core, and then C5 is a more generalized commercial. So this proposal is saying it would be a principal permitted use, meaning it's in that district, and you can kind of see on your maps.
Don't wanna interrupt, but what's the colors on the map? There's not a legend.
There are letters on there too, but they're very small, that's why.
Oh, those teeny little red blobs?
The red ones, yeah, so what, yeah, I know, sorry. That's why I also gave you the big ones, but the ones you're going to focus on, just 'cause I know where they are, green, purple, as you're kinda going out, so you're looking for C.
Anything that has a C.
Anything has a C, yeah, C2, C3, C3 is the downtown.
C2 and higher, correct?
Yep, C5s tend to be these greens, they follow kind of the state routes.
Yeah.
Out Main Street, out Center Street, for example. And again, they're very tiny, but C3 is downtown, C4 is the purple, C5 are these greens that kinda hit all the state route. Yeah, and if you wanna look in your neighborhood.
Or wards, it's bigger.
Right, yeah, and it might be easier for you to read those designations.
You can see him read.
Can't spell.
So the first item was about, specifically, the first item here was about amending existing for community shopping.
Correct, that would be the C2.
The C2.
And then by default, anything that's allowed in C2 is allowed in C3, and everything allowed in C3 is allowed in C4, everything allowed in C4 is C5. So in essence, I'm putting it in C2, which will be the first time it's written as, you know, and as a permitted use, you would then write it in all four of those commercial districts.
Got it. So each of these items, we would approve separately?
You would approve this item once, just adult recreational marijuana, it would be the topic, and this would be all the text, it would only show up as a text in one spot, but because the way the text of the rest of the code is written, it then pyramids up. So I did try to put that in the title, so it's apparent, and then you'd know that it also is intended to make up into the C4, C5, but you're technically only changing the C2.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Evelyn, do you remember the vote, there was a fairly good majority, right?
Yeah, that was a 7-1.
7-1, so the commission doesn't think it's too restrictive or too lax?
The only difference was if you put it in the C1, which is more neighborhood based.
It could get in the neighborhoods.
That would be more open ended, you know, but they felt uncomfortable with it not necessarily being put into the neighborhoods.
Mr. Rollins, you got any problem with it?
No, motion to send on the council with a motion, or with a recommendation to approve.
Second, with the motion to approve.
Also, one, again, not, doesn't change anything, but the state law does have geographical, that was the other question that brought up, what?
Locations to other, yeah.
So the state says they can't be 500 feet from apart, they have to be a mile radius of each other, and if you wanted to, you could choose how many, what a mile would say.
Oh, so we can restrict the numbers, or stated number, okay.
Marion Township limited themselves to one.
Their existing possessor, they have now. I don't have that desire, I don't wanna get too involved in it.
Right, this is more like, kinda treating it like alcohol, in essence, you know, because you yourself, I mean, I know that you got licenses, but, you know, this is a school, we'd be able to also.
And I believe if we were to add that, we would have to, would that have to go through Planning Commission again, or?
That might be as your own.
Through ordinance.
If you wanted to limit the number.
That could be just through ordinance?
Yeah, I think that's just through ordinance, that state gives you that right to do that.
So we have the motion to move it on the council? Okay.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
The next subject, also putting its own ordinance form, is the opioid treatment programs and office-based opioid treatment facilities. So the City Planning Commission, this was more of a closer vote, given the choices between less strict, moderate, and most strict, the recommendation was for a moderate, but it was a four to three vote.
That's the one I wanna talk about. That is not a majority vote. So, Mr. Russell, it did not get five, we've been down this path before with a four to one vote out of the Planning Commission, so.
Now they have nine.
Right, right, and it was dealing with a treatment facility.
It was.
So, and that was a debacle, so can we even consider this?
I suggest you refer back to planning to ask them to look at it again, since they have nine now.
Yes, so.
That's fine, so then that's something to refer back to.
Does that need to take a motion from this committee, or?
I would, to keep the.
To keep, yeah, so I would move, I will make the motion that we send this back to the Planning Commission to get a majority vote.
And I second that.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
The next item was recovery housing, is that what you have next?
Yes.
Okay.
This one is a little blank here, because I put in there the code as a, it kinda does the usage in a chart form, which is kind of weird, but it's likely. With regarding City Planning, again, out of the less strict, moderate, and most strict, they opted for the most strict, it was eight to zero, they have to have some okay, subject matter. The recommendation was that it be a principal permitted use in the R3, which is multi-family only, as well as the C4 and C5, but not pyramid up specifically into the C3. So what we have is the chart here, we do list under R3, as a principal permitted use, which is on multi-family district, you'll see that the word recovery housing, it's outlined that as a type of use, that would show up in the chart under R3. And then because many of the residential uses in the R2 and R3 pyramid up into the commercial, we wanted to make it so that nobody is confused, because normally it would go into the C3, which is the downtown, because it doesn't have parking, parking was the biggest issue with a lot of recovery, we wanted to make it clear that those uses that are regulated in the R3 district are allowed, except recovery housing, we'll put it right there, so there's notes, if you made it that far in the.
You get stopped at those letters.
You get stopped, you don't pass, go on. Whereas the C4s in the C3, or excuse me, C4 and C5, again, it's permitted, and it's restated that recovery housing shall be permitted in the C4 and C5, but not in the C1. So again, we try to make it very clear, yes, C4 pyramids up to C5, and we meant for that to happen, but we also meant for it not, so we're just kinda restating so that there's no confusion. It's very easy to, you know, leave your way around the code and think that something will if this, then that, trying to make it clear.
So that's specific to this call out right here, that's?
Yeah, will be.
Yeah, right here.
Yep, I guess mine, I've got it also yellow, yep.
Okay.
Motion to send on the council with a recommendation to approve.
And the vote on that one was?
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero, okay.
And the reason the other one didn't have a full, it was four to three in order section, that's we had, otherwise we would have, we'd not probably have a five to three.
Or it could have been a tie.
Or true, so.
You know, I guess in your sister.
All right.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
The next two are sets of definitions. The first one, I've put the definitions, I've got brand new definitions to the code, and those would be the office-based opioid treatment programs, opioid treatment program, recovery housing, recreational use, or adult use cannabis, or marijuana. And the state of Ohio spells it all those different ways, marijuana, so it's copy of the language. So those are the three that we don't have in our zoning chapter on definitions.
Thank you for the multiple spellings, it's very cultured of you.
Pointing question. Treatment is, is that like a methodical type thing?
Yeah.
If these are strictly definitions, I will move that we send this on the council with recommendations to approve.
And I will second that.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Okay, last one are existing definitions that are being amended slightly. So the first, there were two, and I'll give Mr. Schaubert credit for pointing out the first one. We already had one, you know, and so we could just use that relative threshold, short-term rifle. You know, we should just go with where it presently is. So, but those definitions to be expanded, family, currently says a person living alone, or two or one persons living together as a single housekeeping unit in a dwelling unit. That's part of what got things confused on recovery housing and some of the different group settings. Tourist home, a building or part thereof, other than a hotel, motel, boarding house, lodging house, a rooming house, that where lodging is provided for transit by a resident family in its home for compensation. So one of the things I noticed in that definition.
So, can I?
These are the existing.
Yeah, okay, so, and I could be totally wrong, but I think when we had this discussion with a certain entity, their attorney kept talking about the definition of a housekeeping unit, and I remember him specifically reading off a definition of a housekeeping unit. Do we still wanna call it a housekeeping unit, given that?
No, that's why, well, if you look under the, what we would amend it to, we took a little.
It still says as a single housekeeping unit.
I didn't think, I don't believe our code actually has the term housekeeping unit.
No, and it didn't, and that's why he, I felt like that was his argument, was we didn't spell out what a housekeeping unit was, and he had definitions of what a housekeeping unit was, and because we didn't spell out what a housekeeping unit was.
Okay, do you think, I guess, in this point, if we look at the amended portion, striking that just living together, just saying?
Living together in a dwelling unit, right, I mean, does it have to say?
Yeah, maybe, okay, strike the words.
As a single, we are amending this in committee.
Which, if City Planning sent this this way, it has to be changed with City Planning, I would say.
I think it's the perfect point, I'm glad you jumped all over it, because our zoning code does reference housekeeping unit, but it doesn't contain a definition of how we define housekeeping unit, and we need to do that. So it would be great if it does go back to planning to work on that particular issue. So, and I don't disagree where you're going, we've included now, we've refined family, but even though we're refining family, I think we need to step out housekeeping unit and define what it is and what it is not. And so when it comes back, hopefully, we'll have it in a form that gets our. And so when it comes back, hopefully we'll have it in a form that gets our code where we would like it to be, so that we don't have a backdoor technical argument available to another recovery housing operator.
Yes, thank you.
No, I appreciate that.
Well, I will move that we send this back to city planning with the recommendation given by, uh, Mr. Rollins and, um, Mr. Russell.
I'll second that.
Mr. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Schaubert?
Yes.
All right, next on there, matters not on the agenda. Thank you, Evelyn.
We're on matters not on the agenda? Mr. Chairman. Evelyn, maybe you can help. This evening we learned that there is a 45-year potential lease of ground for solar panels. Other townships have stopped solar panels. What's the city's exposure?
Tom, in the, um, the way that townships have been able to stop it is because the county commissioners have the ability to pass a resolution stating that excludes areas, and then may each township, the county commissioners, to pass a resolution for their jurisdiction.
Okay.
So, this, I would have to look into whether or not the cities, municipalities have that same option to, let's say, uniformly prohibit it, yeah, or not. Because that's in essence what they do, is they say, not at our, maybe, we're back in, and so it's about seven or so of the townships have opted for that way. Yeah, I would have to look into that after a municipality.
Because if these leases are current or in good standing, we can't do anything, but if they are bought void because Shell bought them.
We can prevent.
We can prevent future possibly. Am I thinking correctly?
Yes.
And should we do that?
I, I think so.
So, so we have to ask Mark to do more homework then?
Well, what has, what townships does the city, we know we're in Marion Township.
Right.
Are we talking about township to the northwest, what's that?
Grand Prairie.
Grand Prairie?
Yeah.
So what is, what have those townships done with the commissioners?
I'll have to look at, got a little, my wall of which ones opted in and out.
Well, across the road, there's a solar farm, so.
Right, Marion Township definitely is, not, did not choose to do that, so. But I think their jurisdiction on that only includes the unincorporated portions, but we could clarify that.
And we can work together to find the answer.
Yeah.
Because I do believe, because I was looking, the city has the ability to regulate some solar things, to have some regulatory options, because I'm just printing off some of that just to kind of stick in the back in case we ever got onto it in the city.
Because I think now is the time to do some, whether we want them or not, we should state our.
And the one thing that the townships really so far, uh, we've discussed is, we look at it in like three different ways. One, it might be just on a house, let's say, individual, and it's, um, either a freestanding panel and yard, you know, it kind of, it all depends on where you're giving your sunlight from. So they, you can regulate them on the properties, you know, or if it's going to be on roofs, et cetera, so at the household level.
So we can dig down that far.
And then also at the, um, let's say it's a industry or commercial use, and they're actually using it for themselves, maybe similar to like how Roque is using their.
Windmills.
Windmills to power their facilities. And then there's that utility grade level, which puts some, generally speaking, local jurisdictions can have them, have some control when they're under 50 megawatts. And that's different, I think, for farms, I would also look at that too. And once you get over that, then it's up to the Ohio Public Power Setting Board. And those are the ones that then county commissioners now can say, well, we opt out of the big, you know, this block of township, but this township one, doesn't even want to have it, so, you know, at all, uh, on the big ones. So we may want to, you know, look, I guess, keep in mind each of those, because, you know, somebody else may want to put it in the, I have one, you know, or, you know, some businesses might want it on a roof, or, you know, whatever, but it's kind of different when you're getting these big giant ones that are basically on utility scale, selling to the grid. And that's where you have larger things, which, you know, may cause more of a.
A few years ago, I was merchandising of all places Dunkirk, Ohio, along Route 68, and they had built all of these windmills, and the county commissioner of Hardin County had approved, they put them in the land with the farmers, and they would make, farmers made good, a lot of money. But, as in the store, one of the ladies that lives across the road said that her property values dropped 10 to 20 percent once those windmills were put behind her house. And that's another thing, is just we don't want these things, whether they're windmills, solar panels, or whatever, that could impact people's property values, you know, because they said that their property values just dropped, and none of the power went to those people in Hardin County either. It went elsewhere.
The other thing is, uh, you know, you were trying to just putting them on brownfield type sites, so it's something that's been.
Oh, yeah, for landfill, there's someone already talking about it.
That might be great, because, you know, it's like, what else are you going to do with it?
Yeah.
So, um, you know, so again, you want to give yourself the opportunity to say yes when it works for you and no, and it's not, you know, so I think that's, I guess I'll put that down as the fourth category, potential, um. Okay.
All right. I want to mention one more thing. I hate to bring up stuff from my job, and, uh, driving the lot in Marion, but it, in Williamsport Road and Main Street by W. Marion. Their traffic has backed up there when those trains stop in the tracks a mile.
But. It's no its fault.
Yeah, we have school buses that are, that are trapped back, they can't get up, they, most school buses go to Harding in the afternoon to Williamsport Road, because then that way they will get caught by trains. So, is there any way that that could be fixed, or when there's a lane?
Preach.
A turn lane?
Preach.
Yes.
Preach.
Something's got to be done there to improve the traffic flow, because there's going to be some bad situation where something's going to happen, and it needs to be developed and changed.
Right. I guess multiple things have been, um, you're bringing up a point that people are aware of.
Some are passionate about it.
Yes. And, uh, and so there, we have the conversations, there aren't always good, easy, uh, solutions. And there's hope to try to do something out near Pollock, because they do get back that point a lot, uh, but that whole intersection, when I've talked to the, you know, it's been coming up on our transportation plan for the whole county, it has an issue too. And, um, you know, Brad Irons will tell you that with that intersection being county road, a city road, and state road, um, it needs to be the state, and so we keep bringing it up to ODOT, but again, maybe, uh, this council might do just a resolution of, please, God help us, do something with, you know, to, to ODOT, or I said, put this on a priority.
When Bishoff was here, he had to stay looking at that. That's been five years ago, four years ago.
Yes.
Nothing's came out of it.
Right.
Since we're talking about railroad crossings, the west side is terrible, at 309. This has nothing to do with zoning, but if we're preaching, let's talk about the railroad crossings.
No, I mean, it is, it's an issue.
Now, you kept doing overpass everywhere, but there, there is a lot of, uh, even tonight, I didn't get home to change clothes because I was held up by trains. So, uh, but thank you, Evelyn, for all you do.
Oh, well, I appreciate it. Been through this pretty efficiently, given the complexity of the topic. Thanks for following along.
Thank you, Evelyn.
Is there any other matters, uh, we've been doing, and, uh, reports? And if that's the case, we're going to adjourn at 8:25. Yeah.
They're the better man I'd want to be. They'll be rich one day, one day soon. Obviously, they'll be broke, but. What's going on?
What are we doing?
I don't know yet. I'll figure it out.
Are we ready? Call finance committee to order 8:26 PM. Clerk, if you're going to take rule, please.
Mrs. Lang?
Here.
Mr. Rollins?
Present.
Mr. Ratlin?
Present.
Proceedings, we have minutes to approve from 1/21/2025.
Motion to approve, second.
Clerk, take rule.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Ratlin?
Yes.
Moving on to old business, item number one, update from the auditor of state project and the bank reconciliation project for '22, '23, and '24. Yes, we had a meeting last Tuesday with Greg and Nicole as well, um, there are some final adjustments that we're moving forward with in order to get the project back up. Any questions?
So they've got, all the financial statements are in order and we're ready to move forward? Is that what I'm hearing?
The bank reconciliations are in order, the financial statements are separate, that's what, that's with the audit, that's a separate thing.
Okay. Just looking at our last minutes, you had said two weeks ago, there was a phone call Friday to go over some scenarios with utility building to focus on the problem that keeps causing issues in New World. How did that go?
That went well, um, after that call, we actually had a meeting with Mansfield as well, um, and one of the, one of the situations that we had figured out was that the overpayment option during the adjustment process was causing issues within New World. Um, when we had a meeting with Mansfield, Mansfield also confirmed that, they don't even use the overpayment option, so it just kind of confirmed that we were indeed headed down the right direction by eliminating that option here forward.
Have you stress tested that? You've run up scenarios and you're not getting different numbers?
We've run scenarios through tests and everything's been fine.
Okay, then it said you, that you had a call with Greg and Nicole and not New World, and that there were some technical difficulties, so the call had to be rescheduled, and you were able to go through the scenarios and make adjustments. So are all the adjustments made?
No, we're still finalizing a few of them.
Okay, so then two weeks ago too, you had said that the overpayment option had been identified as the problem. Had you already talked to Mansfield or no?
No, we didn't talk to Mansfield until last week.
Okay.
With those adjustments that Ver, um, Veritas had recommended, I did talk with Chelsea and Miranda today, or Chelsea and Martin, and I asked them to give 100% to that, I would like those finalized or an answer as to why not by our next committee meeting. I believe those adjustments totaled approximately $1.7 million, which will directly affect, the cash position report. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So what's the holdup on the adjustments?
Have to go through and get them processed. There's, um, there's several that have to just be, that have been identified, um, that just have to be processed. Um, and then there's a few that we still have to figure out exactly how we're going to process them, um, but we'll be working on that this week.
And how does that, how does, how do these adjustments impact our cash position, Tacey?
It'll reduce the cash by $1.7 million. But what we need to do is we need to figure out why they are. Two of them have to do with other liabilities, and Fund 302 has been carrying a negative balance because revenue had not been recorded, but there are some Veritas adjustments in there, so I want to make sure that 302 is balanced to zero, which was what Martin's working on for me today. In 19, it was balanced to zero, as it should be. 19, or 2020, it had about by the $459, he figured that out and moved up to where it been corrected. 21, 22, and 23 are off by several hundred thousand dollars. So again, I want to make sure those are correct before we go and untangle the other other liabilities, to make sure everything is matching up together.
I guess I'm trying to understand if, why wouldn't, why?
302 is still negative.
Yeah, why wouldn't that have flushed out, like, if it were affecting cash position, why wouldn't we have caught some reconciliations previously?
I don't know why not.
Because we're not doing them, right?
Well, partially, yes, I would agree with that.
Okay, I just wanted somebody to say that.
I would agree with that now, but I can tell you that Fund 302 should net to zero. The revenue comes in and expense comes in, and it's just a clearing account, as all should be, three quarters of bonds for the various funds. So we, we have bonds that run, they're funded by TIF, General Fund, and our capital improvement 401 fund. The revenue comes in, expense comes in, they should always be zero. And I can tell you in 21, 22, and 23, they were not. I've asked, I've, I've shown where I see the revenue is based on the debt schedule I have, Martin needs to go through and verify, because they did do some refunding in 2020. I just need to make sure those, how those are being recorded are actually being properly recorded. 2024 is perfect. Martin and I worked on those together, those balance out perfectly. So we just have 21, 22, and 23 that are off, which are the ones we are, you know, we're balancing, and I just want to make sure that those are considered before we finalize.
But we've even moved on from 21 because we were told that was done.
I'm just saying that that one has a negative cash balance, a negative balance in the fund, which it should not. So we have to look at that to make sure that that has been, there isn't a adjustment in there for Veritas. But I don't have the working papers, which I asked Martin to check with Nicole, to see the working papers that matched up with that, because we really just need to make sure, just because it smelled like a duck, it swacked like a duck, I don't know if it was, so I just want to make sure we're looking at that at all angles, because I can tell you Fund 302 is still not balanced. Martin's working on it, um, we worked on it again today, so I believe that he'll get those, those numbers figured out. But they have to be, we have to, we have to look at Fund 302 first.
So does our auditor have any update to that?
I, I agree with what she's saying, I mean, to her point, there were adjustments that were put in there based on the Veritas, um, projects, and that would, you know, could be one of the things throwing it out of bounds, but we have to look into it more in order for us to determine exactly what the problem is. is.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So, Mark, for, 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 question of clarification. You have directed your staff to make the adjustments that Veritas has recommended. Because I understand there was some hesitancy about that? Are they moving forward with all those adjustments that Veritas recommends?
Right, as of right now, any adjustments that we have in-house that we're aware of, they're being made. There's a few that we still have to determine how we're going to make them. Those will be made once-
But they will be made?
Yeah.
Any other questions, Chair?
Yeah, we already have 13 to go on makeover. So, the $1.7 million, is that going to affect budget like now?
It's multiple funds.
Okay.
So, until we know what funds those are, then we'll be able to determine what that does for us.
Is already short, how much?
Yeah, we're not necessarily short. The clarification, I have not, I've not personally been asked, but part of the budget, the difference of cash versus the budget, is we're using the cash that we already have earned, it have on hand, so we would not record that revenue twice. So the difference of that $10 million that keeps floating out there, it's not, we're not short. We are not necessarily receiving that cash or revenue in 2025 because we've already booked it and it is in our cash, statement cash position.
But I mean, just to piggyback off that, no matter what funds, I mean, a number like $1.7 million does change things.
It does. And until we see what those funds are, obviously, that's one of the areas, I've, I've been reviewing all of the funds. I've gone back through '21, all the way to current, to compare revenue to expense to the statement cash position, to make sure what we, what we over or underspent between our revenue and expenses, and comparing to statement cash position to kind of make sure it's flowing through. Because I know we've talked about 2019 being a reasonable number. I went back to 2021, I like five years. So I have '21, '22, '23. '24 is, you know, close, it's projected, we're almost, we're pretty much done finaling all our stuff. And then 2025, what the budget is. And then we're meeting with each other department so that they can talk about that. I will be bringing that to council, hopefully in the next month or so, as I get those finalized. Just so you guys can kind of see what we, where we're standing, and as we finish up this $1.79, we'll definitely incorporate that.
Any other questions? Moving on to item number two, audits for 2021, '22, and '23.
Yes, I received an email from John today after requesting just a follow-up. He said he's hoping to have a draft of the financial statements by Friday. There's still some things in WebGAP that they're trying to get fixed.
So, from Hinkle?
Yes.
So he's going to send a draft?
That's his goal, is to have a draft for us by Friday, and then hopefully submit shortly after.
Submit to the state?
Right. I didn't get an estimate on submission date, but he did say that he hopes to have a draft by Friday.
Okay, so at our last meeting, Mike Lennon needed a week to 10 days to finish up a few things, so that heat was completed and then forwarded on to Hinkle?
It was forwarded on to Charles Harrison Associates.
Okay.
Charles Harrison Associates then has some things that they have to finish up, and then it will go to the Hinkle filing system.
Okay, so there's an extra step in there. Mike Lennon is sending it to Charles Harris. Harris is going to send it to-
Right, Hinkle.
Okay.
So you got an email today from the state, and the last time we had said you had an email from them on January 14th, and they had some questions and might need to arrange a call, and that you had emailed them your availability. Did that call happen?
Clarification, it wasn't from the state. It was from Charles Harrison Associates. Charles Harrison Associates, I had emailed them asking for some follow-up information, you know, what's going on, where are we at? He said that if a call was needed, he would schedule it. And so I sent him my availability, and at that point, he said that there likely wasn't a time for a call that was needed at that point. Mike still had things to finish up for about a week to 10 days, and that we would go from there to determine whether or not a call was needed. I emailed today to follow up, and that's when he said that he hopes to have a draft on Friday. So I have not heard whether or not they need a call. But my availability is pretty much open this week. I have a few meetings, but other than that, I'm relatively open.
Okay.
Okay, and status for the '22, '23, we can't do anything with them until we complete the 2021. Moving on to penalties and appeals, item number-
Madam Chairman, just, so if we're still talking about 2020, can we even really move on to '21?
This is '21. We're talking about '21.
In the last discussion, I thought you said you were looking back at 2020 because things were not-
No, 2021.
No, I said that 2020 was off by $459. That's been already corrected. '21, '22, and '23 for Fund 302 is not balanced.
Okay.
Should be a zero balance. Revenue comes in, expenses come out, it should never have any balance in that account. That's just a clearing account.
Okay.
See the '21, '22, and '23 coming up on '24 audits? Have we had any answers from the state that they can combine some of these audits instead of having to have months between them? So, because we're kind of getting into this cycle that we'll never, ever be caught up if it takes more than a few months to get anything done.
We did talk to local government services, and we cannot combine them, but we can expedite them. Meaning, they will focus, the state will take each year and focus as we get, that's my understanding of the conversation that we had, that they still have to go year by year. One has to be completed before-
Right, yes. I guess maybe that's what you're trying to explain, so they can look at all years-
My understanding, Jason, is that typically the state would take like six to eight months per audit.
Right.
In this case, they could potentially do all of these in a year timeframe, year to year and a half.
And, and possibly have us back on schedule by 2026.
Gee, that's still a long time.
Well, and that was-
It's better than '27.
I mean, that was what Mayor Collins had said a month or so ago, that that was one of his concerns, is that we're just, we're never going to be caught up. And-
How, how good are we with the local government services? Because over a year ago, I said four to five days would have '21.
Well, that's before they looked into everything and, I mean, that was just, you know, they were, I think, given a generalization that they could possibly do that if everything was in order, and our business hasn't been in order.
We have these same players.
And, you know, we have sat here for a long time, and we, we questioned local government services. Mike Lennon, we've had problems with. Veritas, we've had problems with. But we're not doing it in-house.
That's what I'm saying by saying, we have the common denominator still here.
Think 2024 is being done in-house. The reconciliations and, and the adjustments. I think we're on track for 2024. But we got to get through '21, '22, and '23. Is there any other questions or concerns? Item number three, penalties and appeals. Have we had any additional correspondence from IRS?
Not since the 23rd. I emailed council when I received that correspondence.
I know I saw where you had worked on it. Did, we had emailed some back and forth then. Did you, have you completed a grid or a spreadsheet of exactly every period that we have pending appeals with?
Yes.
Okay, because I know you had sent one, and it didn't look complete to me.
I went back to '24 when all of those periods started rolling in that we had issues with, and I tracked every instance where we received correspondence from the beginning of '24 until now. Everything that we've had appeals for, everything that we've had items come back for, everything that we've received.
Don't, don't we have issues that predate '24?
Yes, but they would have been appealed in '24. Because prior to '24, we had appeals for, what was that, 2020? And those were already closed.
Maybe I wasn't clear, because I think part of our entire issue is that this dates back to like 2020, that then we will pay a penalty that then gets forgiven, but we don't get the money back. It only rolls over to pay for another penalty, and then we get something forgiven, and that rolls over to pay for another penalty. And we've had things roll over, umpteen times over, it seems like, and I don't think anybody actually knows where we're at with a lot of our appeals.
So I'll go back farther and track any additional correspondence that I have. I think I have correspondence dating to '21, so I'll go back to '21 and see what, what all we have, and I'll add it to that grid.
Okay.
On, on your point, that was one of the things that I was questioning when I was going through and doing that spreadsheet, because, like you said, they're rolling penal, you know, they're forgiving them, they're rolling it over, which is called the waterfall effect, which is totally illegal for the IRS to do. They should be refunding us that money. If we've, if they've assessed a penalty and forgiven it, they should be cutting a check and sending it to us and letting us determine where that next-
Not if we owe them for other, I mean, they're not going to give the check if we owe them.
But they're rolling it over from like some 2020 up to 2022. They're skipping. So they're holding on to those funds.
Because we owe them.
If it was in the same year, they could apply it.
I don't think so. Because I mean, I, I mean, I, I know more about individual income taxes than I do about government, but, you know, if you, say you have, say if you owe taxes, like either back taxes or taxes since, and you go back and you get something reversed to where you would get a refund on what you had two, two years ago, but you haven't paid your taxes since then, they, they would just credit, and you would just owe them less. And that's what keeps happening to us, is that, I mean, by the time we get something forgiven, we owe them at least one more quarter. And so they're-
Up through '20-
They wouldn't-
What was the last quarter? 2022, fourth quarter? '23, fourth quarter?
'23, fourth quarter, I think, was the last time there were penalties assessed.
And we have not accrued any penalties in 2024?
Not as far as I'm aware. I haven't received any correspondence for it.
And part of that too was due to the COVID and everything being shut down between '21 and '22, because they didn't get back into the full gear.
I mean, not the original penalties.
No, I'm talking about IRS. Any more comments or concerns, questions? I haven't got there yet. Okay. Any news on this?
No, I tried to reach Sam on the 21st. I'll give him a call. I haven't heard anything back. He does owe us an answer, so it's all in his court.
Okay. New business. Item number four, finance for federal grant program. Clerk, if you will read, please.
Orders authorizing the City of Marion Service Director and Marionarian Transit to accept and take all actions necessary to receive and administer the Federal Transit Administration's Section 5339 USC throughout, through ODOT, authorizing necessary appropriations of monies received and declaring an emergency.
Okay, Ms. Lo.
This is for the 5339 funds to replace one of our older buses, and this was applied for in August 2023. Had applied for this with her. This is just to appropriate the funds, and Councilman Lang and I were talking about under Section 2, 91,430. And I'm not sure if that is correct. Not correct. Correct. What I'm saying is, we're not sure why that lines there. And maybe Law Director Russell could help us there. I didn't notice it earlier.
Because we only need to appropriate the 29,000.
Seventy-two.
We'll send that money to ODOT, and they will actually cut the check for the 91,000.
I just used what was in the email, so if it's a different number, just change the number.
I think we just need to strike out line where A is this is appropriate, the 91,430, because that would not actually be happening.
Well, you have to appropriate 20 to say you-
Just the 29.
So the 91 is 29 something.
So 20, that should be 29,072?
Correct.
Correct.
So can you make a correction and then have it prepared for the next committee meeting?
Okay.
And that still gives us time to meet the deadline that we have to-
Should, they're going to be sending, the timeline is, the next step, they send us the updated vehicle cost work sheet. The price has changed from 2023, about $6,214. And so that's what brings the total to the 29,072. Once they send that new vehicle cost work sheet, I have like 30 days to get that signed and back to them. Then they invoice us for the 29,000.
Okay.
Then I have another 30 days, so.
Okay, so if you can, if you can make that correction on that and bring it to the next committee on the 18th, and I don't see a problem with-
Do we want to entertain just sending it on to council with the corrected number?
With the recommendation to amend.
You would like to make that motion.
Well, I don't think, it doesn't have, well, I mean, we don't have to make a motion to amend it in committee. We can just change it to 29,072, and then-
I would rather do that to ensure we meet deadlines rather than-
I'll make the motion to send this on to council with the recommendation to approve, also with the recommendation to amend the 91,430 to 29,072.
You want to just send it with that number?
Yes. Send it with what number?
29,072.
I think that's what I just did. Is that not what I did?
Well, you did a motion to, like, recommend-
I don't know, because I'm so confused on what the council rules are anymore. Everyone's got, everyone's got me so confused. I'll just motion to send it to council as is. I, is that what you want? You're confusing me now.
Okay, well, then, if, I will make a motion to send it on to council with Section 2A reading 29,072.
That's what I just said!
Not really.
Is that what you heard? All right. I will second that motion, because that's what I said to begin with.
Clerk, take the roll, please.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Rattlin?
Yes.
One more thing, if I can. I have been meeting with Marion City Schools, and we, they are voting on a contract with Marion Trailers at their next board meeting. We just wanted to update you guys and let you know that that was happening. This contract will help transport their special needs students within the city when their drivers are sick. It's not an everyday thing, it's just supplementary. We also have one out to Buckeye Community Schools. They're reviewing their contract as well. And I've worked with Law Director Russell on that contract to make sure that, you know, we've got our- And I work with Law Director Russell on that contract to make sure that, you know, we've got our Ts crossed and our Is done.
I think that's great. A year or two ago, there were issues with Marion City that they were having a ton of busing it, it issues. And actually, I brokered a meeting between the superintendent and the mayor, Shirtsar at the time. And the superintendent at the time was not open to that. So, I mean, I think it's a fantastic, you know, to have a shared, a shared service. You know, so good.
Anybody have any questions? So just take your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Are you a matter, okay, I didn't know if you were on that one or matters not on the agenda.
Yeah, matters not on the agenda.
Am I incorrect in hearing that we have a resignation in the auditor's office?
You are not. That is correct.
So it, you know, it's sad that I think for all of us to hear that is that our payroll clerk, you know, especially hearing we had no deficiencies in 2024. I would think she would be largely responsible for that.
Absolutely.
So it's just sad that we are losing her.
Did she give a reason for resignation?
She was offered a better position with more chaos.
Thank you.
Jason Shaw, Superior State Council. I was going to bring this up too. The last time we was without a payroll clerk, we had some issues. I believe we have some 1095 fines and penalties.
We've had issues every time.
So do we have a solid backup plan?
We're working on it. We actually had a call today, working with a third-party vendor.
That's my, that's my next thing.
We want to make, we're actually.
Benefit from a third-party doing a pay.
We're looking at, well, in the interim, we obviously have a posted. That we have a backup plan, so we've been, we had two, two meetings? So.
Is 1095 due?
No.
Have we already posted it?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, concerns, matters not on the agenda? The reports reviewed, did you have an opportunity to review of any questions on those?
I don't have any.
If there's no other questions, finance is adjourned at 8:50 PM.
I'm going to use that.
Play breaking now.
I used it in 20 years. I've never used it one time, even when I was protein and randomly. I don't know why. I just. All right, call our final committee to order tonight, Marion City Council, Public Utilities Committee. It is 8:59. If you could take the roll for attendance.
Trying to get my page flipped. Mr. Ratliff?
Present.
Mr. Neff?
Here.
Mr. Barr?
Present.
And we have our minutes from January 21st, 2025.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. If you could take the roll to approve the minutes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
We have one item under old business tonight, which should probably be new. It's ordinance authorizing the service director to enter into contract with the lowest and most responsive supplier for a firm supply of electric power for members of the City of Marion Aggregation Program and declaring an emergency as amended. Which I don't know that that should say.
Yeah, then it shouldn't say as amended, so get that revised. But the reason it says it's as amended is it's in the form that we used last time. And things are happening so quickly in regards to electricity, the component that we pay for at our houses. If you take a step further back, we actually hit the pause button because it was, there was so much uncertainty. Probably about 27 months ago, I'm just kind of guessing. And we waited for a period of time, about 60 to 90 days, to go by before there was some settling of the electric component energy market. And it was a good thing because we got a rate of .0671. That's what we're paying if we're members of the electric aggregation in the city program. And you'll remember just shortly after we entered into that agreement for the past 24 months, Ohio Edison and four of those people that are receiving their electric component from the utility, the fallback supplier, it went up to like 12 cents per kilowatt hour. So we were almost half of what some of the users that were receiving their electricity from the fallback supplier were at the time. Listen, things have gotten even, not more unstable, but the margins are shrinking on the savings that are available. The service director and myself talked with our energy consultant. He was gone to the market because this contract is expiring with the May and June reads coming up. And the electric aggregation program is going to request proposals. The proposals at this point sound as if we might get a proposal of .082. The projections for Ohio Edison is .087. So you can see those margins getting thinner. However, I believe it would be very beneficial for our program to at least get in the 082 because first energy can be, again, unpredictable. I'd be happy to answer questions, but I think that the program still serves a benefit to the program participants, which is, you know, remember, we used to have a natural gas aggregation. But because of the changes in that utility and the components there, our members have benefited by receiving their gas from Columbia Gas as the fallback supplier because those third-party market rates have been above Columbia Gas. So I'll be happy to answer questions, but I urge the committee to send this on to counsel. And it is as timely as it was last time. We really need to pass this at the next council meeting.
I mean, I think it speaks for itself. It's been in existence 20.
So the electric came first.
Twenty-some years.
Near 2000 or whatever the ordinance says.
Oh, one, and it saved over $3 million. So.
Chairman?
Yes.
If I could just ask Mr. Russell briefly, I think some residents get confused on this, but once we would approve this, every city resident would automatically be opted into the aggregation. They would have to physically opt out.
Yeah.
So if, if we pass this, they're going to see a savings on, through the aggregation.
Yes, they would have to do nothing. Right. Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
I have a motion to approve and send to counsel.
I'll second.
Okay, anything else from administration or members of the office before we take a roll? Take a roll.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
All right, so that has been sent on to counsel with an emergency clause and we took off the as amended. Anything else to come before this committee tonight?
That was a recommendation to approve.
Yes. Yes.
Seeing nothing, adjourned.
I said wrong once.
No, you're right. He missed it. Got your back.
I do have one thing. Almost minutes.
It was basically killed that last year. I bought like five boxes. Well, that's good.
Budget council, something.
I think like the first couple of meetings I had him, I went to my box and I can't find another box. They keep them in.
I almost wanted to ask if we did.
After calling the auditors. Well, yeah, by the way, I. Hardly do you lost it. Just like, I keep using it on my way. If you say anything, I don't think I. Sorry.
We had all the rules there. Do you have any information on that?
Yeah. Yeah. They don't pull a server. That's why.
My fault. I'm not sure. I'd have to look further.
I was more interested in this.
It's a practice. Yeah, so what, so. I'm here to post.
Yeah.
That case doesn't talk long enough. Is that your first experience with Mr. Conley?
With what? Yeah, I don't, yeah. I left and went to an A movie, didn't we? I probably said you're leaving.
I did leave. He bought a house that was, had tenants in it. And he refused to evict them. And at one point he hired them to do work on the house and they stole all the tools. Then he, then he tried to give them money to just leave, so they took his money and they still didn't leave. And all these, but he, he wouldn't have evicted. And that's what that whole thing is. And everybody in the whole world told him, you have to evict these people. He just wouldn't. That's not the learning thing I'm usually dealing with up here. That was a new one. Yeah, well, as soon as I saw him, I'm like, oh. Well, the last time I saw him, he pulled his ID out and squirted blood all over the utility billing because he was mad at them. The legislation codes. And that's just true. Uh, yeah, I talked to him down there and said he didn't want to squab. Okay, I'll take a look. The online version of the agenda that I emailed out to email attachment, the online agenda. Finance went to a different audience. And it was from where I got the base. And James. The legislation to it, I forgot to change that.
All right.
That could strictly be me, but.
You got, you got my kids excited now about coming to the dinner, the Harding Day Dinner already. I was like, oh my gosh, they ought to come. Like, if I get you to take.
Just be asked. Ask him. He's, he's from Columbus. They're trying to get ahold of him.
Yeah, that's very cool.
And apparently somebody listens somewhere goes, but I got, I was getting messages from almost nine a.m. How much are the tickets?
My favorite place. Figure out how many people we can fit in there.
Maybe allocation's going to break out the big boner where they get 500 people.
Yeah.
That would be awesome.
Yeah. That would be cool.
But it's one of those things, if you get a name speaker, you have a huge, beautiful. You can get another big name speaker and do it again.
Yeah.
As long as you're able to. What are you doing?
Right on.
This is baked noodle. Yeah, I'm legal.
I say, I'm going to show you two. I'm walking home. I want to help.
I'm getting that.
I just, I keep cleaning up the corridor and making paper from the fire. Emptying the pop and all the other stuff people leave. What's that money off of?
Liz, I know it doesn't, like, stay in favor.
Big dog. It's going to be there in your bag. Hey, can you guys check and make sure the chief got the door locked out there?
Yeah.
This is blocked. The inside. Thank you.